Ready? Okay, I will call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is September 21st, 2020 at 6:30 PM. I will make a note that it's come to our attention that our meeting agenda, although this is a regular meeting, it was filed as a regular meeting back last year when we did our annual calendar. There was an error in the agenda, so it says special meeting. Although this is not a special meeting, it was put out in that way. So I would just ask that none of us, that we don't add anything to the agenda. It was posted in that manner, even though it is a regular meeting. So if we'll just stick to that so that there's no confusion. Makes sense. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two. If you remember, we tabled our August, what then said 26th minutes? So now we have our August 25th, 2020. That was a special meeting. Those minutes were resubmitted, corrected and resubmitted on September 10th and filed on such date. So I would make a motion to approve our minutes from August 25th.
Second.
Second by John. Any discussion? He's quicker. He's not muted.
I know.
All right. See none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next meeting, and I apologize, you only got these today, our meeting from September the 8th. I will make a motion to approve the meetings from September 8th with a couple of corrections. In again, this one was another inadvertent error where it was labeled special media. It was a regular meeting. And so we could change that to regular meeting. And then on page seven, there are three instances in the under present to speak in the first paragraph, to change accumulative to cumulative that appears in the second paragraph and then the third paragraph.
I will second the motions.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item is present to speak. If anyone on the line would like to speak, I ask that you, you should have the ability to unmute yourself. If not, we can do that for you. State your name for the record and we ask that you limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? I'll give you another opportunity. And if no one chooses to do so, there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting for the public to comment. Going once, going twice. Okay, seeing none. I will move on to correspondence. We had no recorded correspondence. The things that came into this office are either applications for our posting or for other departments, not the selectman's office. So it's, it happens occasionally. All right, first selectman's report. Have a couple of things to talk to you about. The fuel tank, the fuel tank replacement at Public Works Garage is nearing completion. And by nearing, I think by Wednesday or Thursday, Troy thinks it will be fully operational. So we saw the temporary tank there. They have a couple of things to finish up. Electric wise, and today they were beginning the paving around the vault itself, the convault tank itself. And then they'll be doing the larger area in front tomorrow. So I'll share with each of you some photos when it's done. It is large and concrete, but it looks nice. And today Troy worked with the fuel system folks on setting up new keys and such for all of our end users, so Public Works EMS and bus drivers. So that is going according to plan. I'm going to mention again, the 2020 presidential election. And you'll probably every time we meet, hear me talk about this until it happens. The town clerk and I are planning to do either recorded video, more likely Facebook Live, which then we can share more widespread, just to explain the absentee ballot process for folks. So hopefully later this week, Robin and I are.
Yeah, shower?
A date. Oh, can we mute? Anyone who's not muted, John? Okay. So ballots went out from the Secretary of State's office to all registered voters. Most folks in Wellington got theirs sometime this weekend. I know I received, my household received theirs on Friday. And so even as early as today, Robin has started to see those in the town clerk's office. So it has been a busy day here at the TOB with folks dropping off their absentee ballot applications. So we'll be talking about that process and the registrars once again. Yes, John?
Erica, if I could just interject.
Sure.
A lot of people are still not aware that we moved the polling place either. So I think we need to be.
So that's my, my next item. Yep. So the registrars have moved the polling location to Hall School. You're going to hear me repeat this many times. We're going to start to see things on social media. The registrars actually developed a postcard, which I believe I hung up. Okay, and I'll show you. They just came in last week. So a nice postcard stating the polling places changed and with some information about voting is going to be going out. See, Robin's got one in her hot hands there too. Beginning of October, so October 1st is next week. So I think that between the first and that first full week, that will be going to every household. So if you have multiple voters in your households, you may just get one postcard. But every registered voting household will get this postcard to note that. And we will continue to say it. So continue to share as much as, as you can. If you talk to folks, let them know our polling place for November 3rd has changed. If anyone calls the town office building, they'll be told the same thing. And then we can't say it enough. And there will be signage up to, to say so. So that on November 3rd, folks know where to go here in Wellington. So I think the postcard into mailboxes will really help get everyone that information. So again, November 3rd, voting Hall Memorial School, not the town office building. All right. So the assistant town clerk position, as of late this afternoon, it has officially been filled. It was filled internally. We're working out some things with the union. So our new assistant town clerk will be Rachel Pierce. She's moving from the assessor's office over to the town clerk's office. Ms. Pierce is, is an asset, no matter where she is in the town hall. So I'm happy that we're not losing her and she's moving over and look forward to what she can do over there. So she'll give two weeks to the assessor's office. So we look for her to start two weeks from tonight on October 5th. And the current assistant town clerk is set to retire next Friday, October 2nd. That will leave an opening in the assessor's office. And so we'll begin that process. Yes, one more. The administrative assistant position that closed on the 15th. The hiring committee will begin that process of reviewing applications and then interviews. And we actually have a special meeting with an executive session for that hiring committee beginning tomorrow. So we look forward to that. Last week, we held the first meeting of the Emergency Communications Task Force. It was a brief meeting, really some housekeeping business before we get started. We did elect Alex Moore as the permanent chair. If you remember, we discussed that we would select a chair. We were kind of hoping someone from that group would take that up. And so Alex, Chief Moore from Wellington, number one, has taken that. And so we had a brief discussion about the charge and our goals. Our next meeting is set for October 7th, which is a Wednesday night at 6:30. At that meeting, we hope to be reviewing the two systems that we had looked at back in the summer, Code Red and Everbridge, and discussing ways to solicit feedback from the community as we go forward. There were several members of the committee who weren't present at that meeting. So I look for a more in-depth conversation as we move forward. I want to give you a budget update. The 1920 fiscal year budget is officially closed. The town government budget returned $121,813.31 to the general fund and lots of things made up for such a large amount returned. If you recall, I froze the budget back in March, the start of the pandemic to necessary spending only. So that left a lot of budgets really and a frozen. So in that, in that, we would have returned more had we not had some COVID-related expenses. And we hope to get some reimbursement from that. But that will go into the general fund, but it will be accounted for in this fiscal year since we have closed the last fiscal year. As for the current fiscal year, we are seeing a need for additional expenses from the selectman's budget perspective that only affects the town clerk's offices. But in general government overall, that's also the elections department. Last, our last meeting, I mentioned to you that we had been given some information about funding from Secretary of State's office specifically for elections and our elections and town clerk departments. But they may come up short of meeting what we need with those funds. So they'll first use that reimbursement. And then the Secretary of State's office is telling us that they will make us whole so that we should submit any expenses in addition to the money they've already set aside specifically for Wellington. And so we will try that route before we look at adjusting, you know, finding the funds within our own budget. Both offices are seeing the need for some additional personnel leading up to the election. More folks at the polling place and then some extra assistance in the town clerk's office to process absentee ballots. We still don't really know what that number will look like. But based on the amount that Robin received in today, I anticipate it maybe, it will be much greater than, than we're used to in absentee ballots. Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, you probably thought you had somewhere around 100 plus ballots today. Okay, a little over. So, okay. So before, you know, come back to you and say, we're going to need more money or the registrars go to the board of finance and look for some transfer on funding. We'll try to see what state resources there are. So we'll, we'll go from there and see. The steep grant that we applied for on August 28th, we're still awaiting word. They had delayed the deadline for that by two weeks because of the tropical storm that we had. So I received word on, I believe it was Friday night, that they pushed back the announcement to October 1st or thereabouts. So hopefully we'll be hearing soon whether or not we receive the steep funding. And again, that was for work, completion of some renovation work at the Old Town Hall as well as the new septic system. All right. Move on to Public Works and Troy is not with us tonight. So I will tell you that amongst many other things that here, Public Works is continuing with roadside mowing. The chip ceiling was completed. We were delayed a little bit because of some rain we got. We need a lot more of that for sure. They're going to begin sweeping the stone next week. So those roads that were done earliest will get picked up first. And catch face and cleaning you'll be seeing going on around town. They were able to install a new bench that was donated at River Road Park. Picking up trash at the park, they do that regularly. They've been working on paving around the fuel tank, fixed a guard rail on Penny Hill. The fuel tank was installed and the fuel was delivered. The fuel was delivered on Friday. And the tank should be up and running this week. They mowed and did some weed whacking around the garage. And as a big reminder, we do this every couple of years. They'll be handing out new transfer station passes in the form of a sticker to put in your car window. That will begin this Saturday and Sunday, the 26th and 27th, and then next Wednesday, September 30th. So folks are going to need to show a valid registration. And you know, you might expect some, a few delays as they hand out those new stickers and make sure that the cars are in fact registered in Wellington as they bring their trash. So if everyone is prepared with their registration, it will make the process go a little bit smoother. All right. And then anyone who didn't come through this weekend will get picked up one at a time as they come into the transfer station. Any questions on Public Works? All right, we're cruising right along. New business. Robin, you ready? You're first up. Okay, so Robin has sent us a request. So I will make a motion and then we can have discussion. I move to authorize town clerk Robin Campbell to be the designee for the state historic preservation program.
Oh, second.
Second discussion. Robin, you want to talk to us a little bit about your grant?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hi, Board of Select. Been a long time no see. Um, so this is basically just typical status quo preservation grant that is offered. I'm pretty sure it's offered every fiscal year from the Secretary of State's office. There's $5,500 on the table for small municipalities, which we are eligible for to pretty much do anything vault related. I do have a couple of ideas of what I'd like to do. However, the grant deadline is September 30th. So with it being nine days away, I do need to move quickly and get, you know, get the paperwork in amidst the 104 absentee ballots that we just received in and the 30 overseas ballots that we're sending out. But it's, it's all good. It's, I'm hoping to either use the funding towards maybe a couple filing cabinets or preserving some of the records, the indexing. It's like indexing. Or the last one, which might be too time consuming, would be to revamp the vault door. Um, I would like to change the entry from the spinning code to like a push entry. So that might be coming down the pike because it's, I don't have enough time. But anyways, that's, it's just basically status quo preservation grant.
It's a $5,500 grant. I think that was in the package she shared with us. So. Any discussion? All right. See, no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Robin has a lot of work to do, so we won't be offended if she jumps off this call and gets back. Thank you, Robin.
Speak for yourself. I might be a little bit offended.
Okay, Robin has been incredibly pulling double duty and really helping out back on this side. So she is still behind the scenes helping prepare for a meeting, although we have others helping with the minutes. And Michelle, Ciara, our assistant town clerk, has been helping out in the office on her days that she's not in the tax collector's office. So Robin's hands are all over our meeting, still helping us. So she's going on to that job, but she'll be back. All right, the next item is a call of a town meeting. We haven't had one of these in some time. So we talked about in-person meetings a little bit, and one of them was the, the need for conducting normal business such as a town meeting. That is our legislative body. And in order to spend certain funds, we have to go to town meeting. And there currently is no mechanism in place for a virtual town meeting. Although we've reached out to the governor's office to see what they can do in assisting that. And after speaking with our attorney, we believe we can move forward with a town meeting. So I'll start with the call and then you can have discussion. I move town of Wellington, notice and warning, special town meeting. The electors of the town of Wellington and all persons who are entitled to vote in town meeting on the matters mentioned in the following warning are hereby warned and notified to meet in town meeting at River Road Athletic Complex, 511 River Road, Wellington at 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 1st for the following purpose. Item one, to see if the townspeople on the recommendation of the board of finance will authorize the appropriation of $45,000 from the Capital Projects Fund, LoSIP, River Road Athletic Complex Basketball Court Lighting to be reimbursed by the State of Connecticut Local Capital Improvement Program, dated at Wellington this 21st day of September 2020. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. So this, just to give you a little bit of background, this, we haven't seen any of these in quite some time. This project was set to move forward in March, just as things began to shut down. Maureen, our parcel, our Parks and Rec director, had moved forward in the process in allowing for this, just as we shut down in-person meetings and the ability to have such town meeting. And so now she's looking to begin the process again and went to the board of finance last week where they made a motion to appropriate the funds and asked that we call a town meeting, which is why. And the place you'll, you'll note is different than our typical town meeting place. So that we can hold this meeting outdoors. We'll make sure that there's lighting and plenty of social distance and mechanisms in place so that our residents can hear the information that they're voting on and vote in person.
We I'm sure we have thought about what happens if we have a hurricane that day or something.
Sure, we'll have to. Well, we wouldn't in any other instance. I do believe one of my first town meetings, and I think it was the regular town meeting that we had, there was a tornado warning and I actually canceled that meeting just a couple hours before. And then we'd have to warn and, and hold again. And the same case would happen now. So let's knock on everything that that does not happen, but yes, that is a possibility. And short of that, we are, you know, going to continue to work towards conducting business in as new, normal a manner as possible. What I wish is that we could, that we had a protocol so that there could be a virtual method, but there is, there is no ability for that as of yet. So we'll continue to work in that direction. But seeing no other, and I did, like I said, I did consult with our town attorney as to the process. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I will do a roll call vote so that John?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Erica? Aye. Okay. As you recall, again, it's been a long time since we've done these. We all need to sign the call so that we can get it into the paper. Do you think it's possible for either of you to stop in here tomorrow morning?
Um, I am on, I'm on lockdown at the moment.
So we will find a way.
We will, we will find a way.
Okay. Thank you, Liza. All right. Moving forward, tax refunds, you should have copies of them. Anyone can take a shot. Otherwise I will begin. I move to refund Elizabeth Carrato a certificate of correction in the amount of $34.67.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I will, I move to refund Wayne or Kathleen Mora a certificate of correction in the amount of $31.76.
Second.
Seconded by Liza. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. I move to refund Wayne or Kathleen Mora a certificate of correction in the amount of $18.30.
Second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I move to refund Honda Lease Trust a certificate of correction in the amount of $159.52.
Second.
Seconded by Liza. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Lastly, I move to refund Enterprise FM Trust a certificate of correction in the amount of $147.76.
Second.
Seconded by John. All the, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Another unanimous motion. All right, that's it for refunds. Old business, COVID-19 update. Since we last met on Tuesday, the 8th, our positive numbers, again, this was a cumulative number, have gone up from then reported 16, 17 by the end of our meeting to 22 and zero probable cases. So we did see a slight uptick. I don't have any specific information to know what that was a result of. I do know, working with Eastern Highlands, if there was a cluster of sorts for us to be concerned about, they would address that. But we are not given, shared with my office, the specifics on who those folks are. What did come from our last meeting and a resident asked about active cases. So I did reach out to Rob Miller after that meeting and to ask if they could report to us active cases. And his response was the state does not track resolved cases. That said, most cases resolve 10 days after they test positive. So again, I say the 22 cumulative cases are positive cases in Wellington that go back to the start of tracking cases back in March. So we do not, I do not know how many of those folks are still ill, I would assume, based on the numbers we have and the data and information that Eastern Highlands is sharing with us, that only a handful of those folks may still be experiencing symptoms. Does that answer the, for everyone, kind of what we talked about last week? Okay. So I apologize. I just want to. Okay. The town office building is still operating the same way by appointment. But we are back to our regular hours tonight. Everyone is still here. So this is our first Monday back to our 12:30 to 7:30 hours to better serve our residents. So we have been kind of busy here today, but a lot of folks dropping off absentee ballot applications. And tax payments still coming in. So we got last Friday, August unemployment numbers. So it showed a decline for Wellington, down from July, which was an 8% to 5.9%, which is 215 individuals of our 3,626 employed residents. So while it's a positive, it certainly is just one indicator to things here in Wellington. And just because they're not unemployed doesn't mean that they aren't still hurting because of COVID. If they've had to take a job with a lesser pay, income could still be down. So it's just one number that we take a look at. But there has been a slight decline for Wellington folks. An update on in-person meetings. We talked about purchasing Zoom meetings for us to use. So it does look like we can, it's either $19.99 a month or $199.90 annually. And we could purchase a Zoom business account that gives us one license for one meeting at a time, up to 300 participants. That would allow us to report to either a local computer or Zoom cloud. And I, what I will do, we talked about doing that for meetings to save on costs. I'll work with our IT to set them up once they're purchased. They will assist in getting that set up. I might suggest that we go ahead and set up a couple of free accounts as well. We do have one here that then we can utilize. That only gives us 100 participants per meeting. So if we had a need for larger meetings, we wouldn't use those accounts. But it would give us other options when there are multiple meetings on any given night. So for instance, one Monday, at the, towards the end of August, I believe there were four different town meetings happening that night. I believe there were four different town meetings happening that night. So it makes it a little bit more difficult. And then we have the ability to use the services still of John and Mike at CHA, and they've been tremendous in helping us set up this virtual world that we're using. And we appreciate them beyond measure, just always looking at ways that we can save as we move forward in a uncertain time. Don't know how long this is going to go on, so I think we can manage going forward. So again, it's an unexpected expenditure, and we'll first attempt to get reimbursed for that from COVID funds from either FEMA and/or the state, and after that, looking at adjusting our own budget. I talked to you a little bit before, we talked about town meetings. Having spoken with the town attorney and based on executive orders and advice, we're going to move forward with outdoor town meetings for the time being, and still looking at working with the governor's office on direction on a possible hybrid, in-person, virtual. And so I'll keep you posted on that. I did receive an email just prior to this meeting from a resident stating their pleasure, their positive feedback on our virtual meetings, and it's allowed them to attend meetings that they couldn't otherwise attend. Now that's been at the forefront of my mind as we've gone through this. And what we, what I really will be advocating for is that we take some necessary steps to increase our technology here, so that we can continue to allow residents to attend meetings without having to be in person and a better, better access to our public meetings. We've definitely seen an uptick in folks, whether it be here at a selectman's meeting, at a planning and zoning meeting, specifically the Board of Ed has seen an increase in parents. And this particular parent has spoken on things that I think we know. Having young children attending a town meeting typically means hiring a babysitter. I've been able to attend more meetings since this switch to Zoom, where otherwise they, they may have had to miss. So I think it's something that we should be cognizant of, and in 2020, we should be able to allow for greater access to our meetings. So we'll look for that going forward. All right, any questions, comments, concerns COVID-related? No, all right, everyone's pretty quiet tonight. All right, this is the opportunity where anyone on the line is able to speak in a public manner. So if you are present to speak, you would like to share a comment, question, concern. You should be able to unmute yourself and just identify, you do not have to be on camera. Identify yourself for the record, and I ask that you limit yourself to two minutes. All right. Always feel free to call or send an email to share your concerns. Good and welfare. I will start with our monthly report for the month of August from Troop C. There were a total of 417 calls for service. That included seven accidents, 10 criminal investigations, zero burglaries, three larcenies, 359 reportable matters, and two arrests. There were 29 total traffic stops under motor vehicle enforcement, zero onsite DUIs, zero arrests, two misdemeanor summons, 14 infractions, one written warning, and 12 verbal warnings. I will take the opportunity to remind us and our, all of our residents, if there has been an incident, a burglary, a robbery, no matter how small, report it to the state police, to Troop C. It's hard for them to give us accurate data on some of the things we ask about if they're unaware of the events. Lock your cars at night. Do not leave your personal belongings in your vehicles. They did say they were going to be continuously reminding folks of that, so we will as well. Again, I'm going to mention that our polling place for November 3rd's presidential election will be at Hall School Gymnasium, not at the town office building. You'd be so tired of me hearing that. Taxes. Taxes were deferred until October 1st, that is next Thursday. So the taxes are due without penalty, in person, or postmarked by mail on October 1st. So if you are here and making a payment to the end of the business day on October 1st, or if it was postmarked in the mail by October 1st, you will pay without penalty. If not, the interest will revert back to the original due date, which was July 1st, which would mean a 6% interest will be added beginning October 2nd, and then 1.5% per month going forward. Our collection rate, Janice did share with me. We, prior to Board of Finance last week, we were at, and this was last Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, we were at 49% in real estate collection, 69% in motor vehicle, and 60% in personal property. And she did note that the personal property collection is better than it typically is at that time of year. So we are hopeful that by that October 1st deadline, we're still getting many, many payments here on a daily basis. So by our next meeting, I'll be able to report the first full collection rates and what those look like. All right, I think that is all I have currently. Anything for good and welfare, Ms. Boritz or Mr. Blessington? No? Okay. With that, we will, um, we meet again for our next regular meeting, Monday, October 5th. And we have a special meeting tomorrow that's an executive session. Oh my, so without any other business coming forward, I would make a motion to adjourn at 7:07 PM.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks. John, thank you.
Good night.